It's a privilege to call this evening's school committee meeting together to order. It's Wednesday, May 9th at 6:30. And the first order of business this evening is to elect new officers, but before we do, and I know there will be many welcomes this evening, but the first one is to our newly-elected school committee members, Jennifer Primack and Jessica Devine. Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome.
And the second order of welcome is to welcome our new slate of officers from the FY-19 school year. And the first order of business is to entertain nominations for the Chair of the 2018-19 school year.
I'd like to nominate Paul Desmond.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And it's time to vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Desmond, and it's time to pass the gallows on to you.
Thank you. The next order of business is to entertain motions for both chair. I'd like to take the liberty of nominating Roger Chalm.
I'll second that.
And other nominations. Discussion. All in favor? Ari, are you in favor? Both yourselves. All right, you're in. And now we have the nomination for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Katara Martin.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion or other nominations? All in favor? Congratulations, Katara.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond, at this time, it's tradition that we identify who will be serving on Superintendent's Union number three.
Yep, yes it is.
The Chair serves automatically. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of our new members, the Superintendent's Union votes on things like hiring a superintendent, which probably we've wanted to do for a really long time, and there's, I don't know, a small number of other things.
Valuation.
Valuation, right. This is all at combined meetings with North Carolina Region, so. And usually, for the sake of deliberation, everybody participates, but when the law requires it, only the union members could vote. So past practice has been the Chair is a member and the two most senior school committee members, which would be Katara, myself, and Roger.
Isn't that a seniority? Here we are.
What a difference in years. So we have to vote that way.
So this evening, I think there was a selection, and we checked the process, and the official vote will take place in combined. North Carolina will vote their members as well. So this is really just sort of who will be the members, but I think a vote is always fine because it's a matter of record. So if that's what the committee chooses to do, there's absolutely nothing harm in taking a vote tonight, and we'll just have to do that again.
Can we take a single vote for those three members then?
Do we need to make a motion for them?
Yes.
Would one of the new members like to make that motion?
I definitely. So I make a motion to...
Elect us three.
Elect Katara, Paul, and Roger.
As a second. Superintendent's Union number three.
Members of Superintendent's Union number three.
Very good.
I accept a minute.
Jennifer, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. I believe that moves us to the public hearing on school choice.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. It is also the month of May, and that brings us to the required school choice vote. And we begin with the public hearing as required as to whether or not the district will elect to participate in school choice next year. As tradition, the meeting begins with a public hearing on school choice. I will provide a very brief overview of the school choice option and highlight its components. Chairperson will welcome any discussion on this topic and will close the public hearing. A vote will be taken during the regular meeting agenda this evening. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, requires that each year the school committees consider whether their district should be in the school choice program during the upcoming school year. If they choose not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, they must take a vote prior to June 1st and report the results to the Department of Education. This is a matter of practice for central office. Once the vote is taken, we will report it to the Department of Education. If we do not vote by June 1st, we automatically become a district of choice. This vote is recorded and forwarded, as I mentioned, to the Department of Education. Historically, the Southborough Public Schools has not been a participant in school choice, and it is, again, my recommendation to the school committee that we do not choose to participate in the FY-2019 school year. My recommendation is based on the following. Current fluctuation of class enrollments throughout the school year, the impact on enrollments in successive school years. Once a student is enrolled at any grade level, they are entitled to remain in the K-8 district. Elgato Regional historically does not vote for school choice as well, so at this point they have not taken their vote, but historically they have not voted as well in favor of that. Since 1992, when school choice was enacted, the reimbursement per pupil was $5,000, and it hasn't changed all these years later. And in Southborough, according to the FY-2016, per pupil expenditure cost in Southborough is approximately $16,000 a student. So there's quite a difference between the reimbursement and what are actually per pupil costs. And also, many of our neighboring districts have also chosen not to participate in school choice. So for those reasons, I once again recommend we choose not to participate in school choice.
Okay. This one I'll open up for any public discussion. Seeing none, I think we can close the public portion of the school choice hearing and move on to audience sharing. Anyone have anything to share? Well, why don't we once again welcome our two new members and chair. Great to be working with you. Otherwise, we'll move on to new business. First item is the FINN School Improvement Plan.
The first for Mr. Riden. His newly, a new position as principal, very familiar with FINN as a assistant principal, so this is a two-year plan.
It is, yes.
Full improvement. It's a little tricky trying to see the screen, so we'll jump in a little bit.
Thank you. Excited to present the plan, and in recognition of our two new members, scaled down the presentation so it's only three hours total. First, I'd like to thank all the hard work of our school council. Jaclyn Cottrell, Grade 1 Parent Rep., Hari Tharisha, our preschool parent rep. And this is the first year that we've actually had a preschool parent on our school council. We hope that continues moving forward. Nicole McMahon, co-chair, FINN staff rep. Kristin Skiavo, FINN staff rep. And Kerry Packard, the executive director of the Southborough Extended Day as our community rep. Now, I'd like to go back to the first slide and talk a little bit about how we started the school year at FINN. At the very first staff meeting I led, I introduced this slide that you see before you, but it was without the bottom sentence or the tagline. And I asked our staff, if we were to have one sentence or phrase that truly encapsulates what FINN is all about, what we do day-to-day, what would it be? And after a wonderfully reflective discussion, we decided on this, that FINN is an early childhood center committed to a whole-child approach to learning. And the reason why I mention this is that our school staff truly feel that the work that we do is rooted in a whole-child approach. Then what we did during the last part of that meeting was kind of a bit of philosophical reverse engineering, and we looked at our district's vision and our mission statement, which I'll read for you. It's also our school song. We do this in our morning announcements daily. "At Mary FINN, we try our best to learn and grow, take pride in what we do and know, include each other in work and play, feel safe and happy throughout the day, respect our school and everyone, and work together to make learning fun." So we talked about that, and I asked the staff to come up with the core of what they thought that meant, and we came up with a series of core beliefs. And we hold true to these. We said that we would adopt these as what our mission is day in, day out, to really help carve the course of our work. And I'll read them to you. Every student should feel safe, comfortable, and excited to come to school. Every student should feel positively connected to school staff. Every student should feel empowered to seek adult support. Every student should be encouraged to take risks. Every student should develop a sense that they can be responsible for their own learning and their own behavior, and that all instruction should be differentiated to reach every student, and that a collaborative and supportive professional learning community promotes continuous improvement. So that's really what's driving the FINN School right now. So over the past two years, we have had a school improvement plan that was rooted in Woodward and FINN. And we're fortunate now that we have kind of school-specific membership. Steve and I are in contact. We're all in contact on a weekly basis for all sorts of reasons. The alignment still continues, but we're kind of separate in our school council membership. So over the past two years, some of the things that we've worked on are directly related to the district's vision and focus areas. And then goal number one in communication, we have, I'll read you the goal, fostering ongoing communication with stakeholders, including students, staff, parents, community members about all aspects of the school environment, and to develop external relationships with the community at large. So one of the things that we did over this year was do a kind of informal compilation of information that parents have given us regarding school-based and teacher-directed communication. And what we've found is that parents are looking for less. They're looking for less content. They're looking for more concise information that's really directed to their child's progress with visuals. So think of like the Early Childhood Center, that a lot of pictures and photos of their kids at work. We've also continued our principal coffees with focus on volunteering in our schools, our safety, school safety presentation, social curriculum focusing on zones of regulation. And then we have other parent coffees planned on parenting and children's mental health. We're also proud of our seniors that work in our classrooms. Some of our seniors listen to kids read books, they work at math centers and other activities. The staff member who's coordinated our senior volunteers over the past 15-plus years, Margie Labanco, is retiring, and we have a new senior coordinator, Sue Hughes, who has already reached out to the senior center to get new recruits for next year. We're still continuing to celebrate cultural diversity. The last weekend, April, was dedicated to celebrating the diversity within our school, and the culmination was on Friday with a crocodile music group, an Afrikaan music ensemble. And they did a morning presentation, and then the rest of the day they spent doing mini workshops for students on how to play African drums. It was great. We're also partnering with area colleges, Framingham State, Simmons, Worcester State, and this year we had eight student teachers working within our building, helping out. And of course, the continued work that we do with our food pantry. In the area of curriculum, to align curriculum with state standards while providing a comprehensive curriculum that meets the needs of all learners, we're continuing to analyze and refine our math program, focusing on special education in our ELL students. We've implemented our Connect for Learning, which is at the preschool level, and that program has a strong focus on science and social-emotional learning. We've completed professional development in the life sciences, physical science, and planning for PD work in earth and space science next year. And grade-level teams continue to work with math professional development, more recently with Graham Fletcher, a math consultant, on deeply analyzing math assessment data and how to relate that to the curriculum. In the area of student support services, with the goal of continuing to build and support a dynamic learning environment for all students, one of the things that we're going to try to copy from Woodward is the famous wake-up-and-workout program that has been in existence for at least 10 years, run by Mary Ellen Duggan and Tiffany Good. Tom McCabe, our physical education teacher, has piloted an early-morning exercise program that can help students. We're looking at the data for that. We'd like to expand that and broaden that in scope. Dale Burgess, our school nurse, she's doing her walk-to-school Wednesdays. We had one this morning, very well attended. And Helen Dejardins, our district's new special education chairperson for Southborough, has established some school-based approaches and practices which help align with district goals, strengthening our special education processes. In the area of technology, we're still dedicating our Technology Mondays to looking at how current technology resources can be utilized and maximized within our teaching. We have piloted between FINN and Woodward a Tech Monday Boot Camp, where staff have been surveyed in determining their technological training needs. And we're focused on areas of Google Slide, Google Forms, YouTube, and how to organize our Google Drives. We are working on a foundational understanding of coding for our students with the use of B-bots. We're trialing that this year. I was able to watch, observe a lesson where kids were working in pairs last week with directionality programming, their B-bot to go so many squares, take a left on a treasure map to get to their treasure. It was so fascinating to watch this first-grade group working collaboratively on the programming, the fundamental basics on programming. We're also exploring the use of virtual parent coffees. And I say this because it's related to the focus area of communication, where some of the feedback has been that not all of our parents are able to attend during the school day. So our thought is, if we had virtual coffees or coffees at night online, where we're able to ramp it up with a kind of open meeting session, we would get more parental involvement that way across the community. So that's a small snapshot of what's been accomplished over the past two years, but it leads us kind of where we're going for 2018, 2020. And back to our core beliefs, as I mentioned earlier, everything that we do is rooted in the district vision and focus areas, and with the theme of supporting the whole child. So our first goal really reflects on our commitment to social-emotional learning and keeping it a major focus area for the district and for FINN. We're doing that because research shows that when schools make social-emotional learning their priority, student motivation, academics, behavior are all maximized. And we believe that when our students are emotionally healthy, supported, motivated, and challenged, they'll be able to learn to the best of their ability. So the goal one for FINN is that FINN school staff will enhance student learning by developing a school infrastructure that can integrate and support a comprehensive and research-based social-emotional learning, or SEL, curriculum. And to make this goal attainable, we've broken down our action steps or indicators across a two-year period. Year one, we're establishing a building-based SEL leadership team, and this team will have a broad cross-section of staff representation. Next, we're going to analyze the Massachusetts DESI SEL standards. They're currently just at the pre-K and K level, and they're working on more in collaboration with other states, but they haven't been finalized yet. Our goal is to make recommendations for Grade 1, using the existing standards as a foundation. We're then going to inventory, examine, and assess for effectiveness based on developmental need, the existing SEL curriculum programming that's currently in use at FINN. And I say that because at the present time, we've had kind of an additive approach, where we have a core foundation of programming, and we continue to add to that. Now it's time to inventory that, analyze it, and really examine at a deep level what's working. From that, we're going to determine what aspects of SEL curriculum and programming align with the state standards, our school climate and culture, as well as the programming and procedures for FINN. That's year one. Year two, make SEL curriculum and programming recommendations for cross-curricular implementation with the goal of developmental scaffolding. We're then going to develop professional development framework to increase faculty readiness to teach SEL. We're going to include, or develop, parent-community workshops to assist parents in the greater community in supporting SEL at home and within the Southborough community. And then we're going to develop a means by which SEL skills and competencies can be assessed and measured. The end result is to have a comprehensive curriculum that supports all of our students' social-emotional needs, and a curriculum that can be built upon by the upper grades at Woodward, near and trotty. Our next goal is directly rooted in science. As the district embraces the next generation of science standards, it represents an exciting shift in science curriculum and programming within our classrooms. The standards are a blend, and that's the science word, blend, of content and practice to aim to provide all students with access to quality science education. And as the expectation of what our students know and can do changes, our instructional methodology must change with it. These new standards require educators to shift classroom focus from the transmission of information to the application of knowledge through real-world experiences. And as such, we're looking to capitalize the inherent curiosity of the world that our students possess, and use that curiosity to engage our students in hands-on STEAM-related activities. Our goal is for FINN staff to look at the next generation of science standards and align our science programming and curriculum. Again, our action steps are across a two-year period, with year one, school staff working collaboratively to explore curriculum and programming, and looking for consistency within topics, themes, and activities. This is especially important as preschool has adopted Connect for Learning, which has a strong science component. Next, we're going to develop and build upon STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, Math, related materials and resources in the areas of life sciences, physical science, and earth and space. A good example of this is a STEAM physical science materials car that was designed by two of our first-grade teachers and funded through an SES grant. Next, we're going to promote cross-curricular science integration by incorporating the use of science terms within literacy, math, music, art, and other content areas. We're then planning to create cognitively demanding instruction that requires our students to practice and think in ways of scientists and engineers. And then we'd like to build upon that action step and explore the use of science and engineering journals to document student learning and projects. In year two, we'd like to establish collaborative relationships with community businesses, science departments at area colleges and universities, and other schools for volunteers and sponsorship of hands-on activities and presentations. A good example of this is the Traveling Bow Soundwave Studio that has been around to different schools. We feel this is an underutilized resource that can further showcase real-life science. We're also going to design, fund, and implement Makerspace activity areas within each grade classroom. And finally, we're going to create a baseline metric of big questions and essential understanding using established thinking routine questions within all science-related activities, experiments, and demonstrations across all grades. And thinking routines originated out of Harvard's Department of Education's Project Zero Center. It has tremendous application across all content areas. For us at FINN, thinking routines can tap into our students' inherent questioning of the world, their natural question, why, how come, and helping students understand how what they see can directly relate to the world in which they live. So that concludes my presentation of the 2018-2020 School Improvement Plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess I was thinking about this virtual coffee, I guess, plan. It's not something you've done before?
It isn't. It's been done at other schools. I've talked to our Director of Technology, Julie Doyle, with our tech person, and it's doable through a different, a number of different platforms. So we're excited about exploring that. We were planning one for close to the end of the school year, and then if it goes success, if it's successful into the next year as well.
It makes an interesting thought about how to engage parents that, let's say, are working full-time, they really can't, you know, engage during the day, school. No, we haven't done this anywhere else, but not even...
I don't believe it's been done within our district.
So you're groundbreaking.
Well, I can't take credit for the idea.
Not the idea, but for the implementation.
I live in Holliston, and it's been done at Holliston at their middle school for a number of years, and parents love it. They love it. It's basically coming to an online forum where you're hearing or taking part in a presentation. You can ask questions, you can field questions, you can present, you can contribute. So there's a lot more interactivity with something like this.
You answered my next question, which was, what do we know about how it's been received in different places? It sounds like at least one or two areas it's been received well, so.
And as I said earlier, based on the feedback from our parent community on your limitations with your work schedule, you're having something that can happen in the evening remotely where you don't necessarily need to be on-site, is a wonderful benefit.
Well, you know, you said you didn't want to take credit for it. Probably the team, you know, good for you and the team. Be very interesting to, I guess, observe the results.
We're excited.
The other question was, I had one on the science, and I've been a while since I've been involved with science at that level. Can you, want to give a thumbnail about how this builds on what you're already doing now, and how these goals are going to build on that?
Sure. So the district unrolled with two of the three-year plan for standards with their staff, and staff have adopted programs which support that as part of their weekly curriculum, push-pull, some growing and changing organisms, studying organisms. Greg Ashley was part of a lesson with a kindergarten class on best bugs. So they were looking at best bug habitats, anatomy, parts and whole. They're working collaboratively on what they saw and comparing notes. So we're building upon that. We're taking that kind of theme of the observation and really taking it to the next level, and hoping that through that natural curiosity of why is a bug doing that, what happens if they move over here, it's crawling on my hand, what happens if it falls, will it die? You know, those are the things that kids were thinking about and asking while that lesson was going on. So we want to build upon that and expand upon it in a broader sense. In addition to that... In addition to that, I don't think I mentioned it, we have a proposal with SEF right now for FINN Family Farm. It's headed up by a preschool and K-team with the hope of creating beds, raised beds, for each grade, which would be maintained by students in the grade and parents of those students across the summer with a yield at the end of the summer that possibly could be part of our cafeteria, you know, table-to-food, farm-to-table kind of approach. Ties into good nutrition and our science curriculum, so we're excited about that as well.
I have a comment or a question about the, so I've been speaking to members of the Open Land Foundation, and they're very interested in potentially collaborating with the schools or volunteering to do educational programs, things like, you know, journaling, plans, or having projects through them, or having students come and photograph and watch. So I think there's a, at least there's interest from them and also coming into the school potentially to do some education potentially linked to the science piece, so that's one avenue.
In the planning, we reached out to the South Grove Ed Foundation. They hooked us up with the gardening club, and of course, the work that's already been done at Trotter. We spoke to staff who coordinated their garden and some of the nuances and management of it, which is a big piece. So we're really excited about it.
I just want to comment on the social-emotional learning aspect, which I mean, I've seen the results of that, and the lingo certainly comes home with the kids, and I think it's a really positive thing, and I think that expanding it in this way can only be even better. I think it sounds great.
The STEAM, I was thinking about the STEAM part in reaching out with the community. Jen and I both were talking with seniors at the senior center, and there's so many gentlemen there who reached out to us and said, "I'm an engineer, I'm retired, and I would love to be interacting with the kids somehow and volunteering at schools." And I was so touched by that, and they just, this sounds like it would match up really well with, you know, driving the community piece of like being connected with the community, but also bringing in people who have a lot of experience, so.
We had one senior volunteer, this is probably 10 years ago, who did physics lessons with the kindergartners. So imagine pulleys, I'm not a physics guy, I know nothing about it, but he had a number of pulleys, and there were probably six or seven, and he would have staff sit on a block and kid, one student would actually pull just with a simple rope because, and kids were fascinated. They loved that, the idea of pulling their teacher around the classroom with a rope.
That's great.
So I think you said we're getting in touch with Sue Hughes? Do you have seniors who want to be involved?
Sue Hughes is definitely involved. She's one of, Sue Hughes and Allison Stevens.
Okay. Anything else? Clayton? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that brings us to the school choice vote, which we were warned about. Anybody have any questions, discussion on that? This has always been kind of a slam dunk, I think, just because of the numbers from my perspective, 5,000 versus 16. I don't know what else you can add. You ready to vote that? All in paper?
This is the most, should we get a question? Five, five, MGL required language.
If I may.
Off the top of your head.
Just as a comment, I think primarily, there really haven't been any changes in our situation, okay, that would, I think, merit, you know, change in our position. At least, maybe next year or two, two years, that could be a different story, but it certainly isn't today. So I would like to make a motion that the South Grove Public Schools vote to not participate in school choice in fiscal year 2019.
Hold second.
Second by Katori. No discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you. Matt, I'll be so recording.
Apparently we have a grant or a donation to be approved.
And this is very timely, Kathleen. I think this was a part of your presentation as well, you and your School Improvement Plan.
Yes, so this is, we had a fundraiser to help us to secure more funds for Ausna, which I had spoken about in our School Improvement Plan when I presented. And so this will go to purchasing more devices for classrooms. Our ultimate goal is to have a set in every classroom. We're almost there, so currently we are utilizing them on a daily basis, and it's switched off by grade levels on a weekly basis. So this will help us to secure some more devices. It's exciting.
So who is the donation from?
It was actually from Pizzeria Uno, and, yes, that was from, no, I'm sorry, that was from Skyzone. I think that's why it's called Flight Night.
Skyzone?
Skyzone.
Trampoline place?
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of $542 to Neary Elementary School for Flight Night for Ausna. What's that?
From Skyzone.
From Skyzone.
Second. Thank you, Roger. No discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whole business. First item is the kindergarten transition update.
So this has certainly been an item on our agenda since September, and really we've kept this on the agenda because it's very much aligned with one of our focus areas, our guiding principles as we develop budget throughout the year. And we are continuing to be watchful and oversee the enrollment because we do know that we are in our second year of transitioning to a tuition-free kindergarten model, which is incredibly exciting. We had predicted a three-to-five-year period of time to do that, and by transition, it means to slowly move folks off of reliance on revolving funds as we're able to incorporate those funds into the operational budget. And we've been able to do that in a very planful way so as not to significantly impact the tuition revolving process, but also to keep our budgets in line with the parameters set through the budget cycle. And so we had targeted around August first to determine what that, if any, reduction in tuition would be, and that's still where we're trending. We have to continue to watch the enrollment, so it's a combination of enrollments and necessary revenue to support the program. The goal this year was that we would be able to move tuition from where it is now, which is $29.50, to $2,000, and that's still per family and that child, and that's still our goal. Last year, we were able to reduce tuition from $32.50 to $29.50 in one year, which was a pretty significant drop. So our plan is throughout the summer, once we get closer to the start of school, look at what those enrollment numbers actually got, because that will drive staffing, final staffing for the program, and then adjust the tuition revolving accordingly. And again, we're creating that sort of balance, right? That imbalance of movement from reliance on tuition revolving, which was about $50.50 before we started, maybe $60.40, to total operational within the next couple of years. So when we return, there'll be a letter sent out over the summer, once we finalize that allocation of funds, redistribute the funds from tuition to budget, and know our final staffing numbers, and when we return, we'll have that information. Last year, we sent the letters out to the families in August. It's not too late because we generally require a deposit anyway, and we know that we're not going to zero deposit and completely tuition-free this year. So those letters and that process will go out. One of the things we are considering, though, because we do, not only for this, but for our preschool tuition, is to gravitate from a quarterly basis to a semester basis in terms of payments, because we're finding that it's getting to be the end of the year, and it's getting increasingly difficult to collect any unpaid funds. And certainly, we work with families as necessary as we always do and as appropriate for their needs, but that will allow us to have that revenue stream earlier, and so we're able to make these kinds of decisions sooner. And that's helpful to families as well. So we're going to pilot that next year and see if it makes a difference for families and certainly for our own business practices, and we'll give feedback on that.
Does semester-based mean two payments?
Yeah. Well, it's actually three. There's a deposit, and then there's one, and then there's that.
And two during the year.
Yeah, exactly. So that's enough, Dave. No vote.
All right.
Just information.
Quick question. So does the deposit, I mean, are the, does the deposit basically sort of come out of the first payment, so you add those two together and that's?
That's a total.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Moving on to the K-12 World Language Study Group.
Do you mean as our real chair or study group chair?
So we were able to meet last week, and not everybody could attend, but the way we've set up our team drive, people are able to contribute even remotely, so that's been nice. We now have a shared Google presentation that each subcommittee is working on in their small groups. Lots of research has been done and shared, and that's also in our team drive. So great conversations are happening. We'll come together again June 7th to look at our Google slides that we've all added to and talk about next steps moving forward.
What about, can we talk about what some of the groups are working on?
Yes, so we have K-5 exploring what's happening in other local districts around us, what type of programs, whether it's an immersion, a FLESS, or a FLEX, three different programs. Katori, do you want to speak to yours?
Sure. My group, my small group, is working on what other districts in Massachusetts are doing, especially sort of districts that are geographically close to us and also similar in composition. So the types of programs that they've implemented.
And another middle school and high school group is working on what does that look like if we were to bring this into the elementary schools? How would that help or how would it benefit their programs? And so those are the three committees that we're working with.
I just wanted to comment, I think in addition to the work exploring what the viability and feasibility might be moving or expanding the programs that we have in place, I think it's really enhanced the transition, transitional conversations from grade to grade as a curriculum discussion, and to really have a greater understanding and a more in-depth understanding of what's taking place, where it may be taking place already, which typically is at the high school and into the middle school somewhat. So the ultimate goal would be to have the study group present the report to the superintendent, the superintendent reports it to the school committee, and maybe it's part of our budget discussion as a budget driver next year.
It's been interesting to see how other school districts have rolled out of K-5.
Yeah, yeah. Right, there's a variety of approaches.
Exactly. So learning experience for all of us.
And I want to thank Kathleen again for taking this challenge on, as if being a principal of the nearest school wasn't time-consuming enough to really invest the energy into this. It's been appreciated and tremendous effort.
I appreciate the opportunity. It was, as I had shared with Christine and Greg, it wasn't a passion of mine prior to this. I hadn't put a ton of thought into it, and now it's just, it's really ignited a fire, and the more research we do, the more benefits we see. But we also see areas that are, you know, we need to explore further to be able to bring something like this if we want to. We're going to try to start with great research and really good collaboration between the team that we have. It's a team of 10, and it's been a great match for us, and our subcommittee work has been extensive, really taking what we need have been assigned to do and working together to really make that happen for us. It's been exciting. Thank you.
Is there a timeframe for when you expect to be?
We hope to meet in June, on June 7th, finalize our presentation and present it to Christine and Greg at the end of June.
Pretty good.
Who are, who are on the teams? Is it mostly people, teachers or parents or?
Teachers and administration across the district at the elementary level, middle school, high school, and school community representation as well.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And next, the public safety building update, new driveway enhancement.
So we're moving from curriculum to construction. One in the same, it depends on the conversation we're talking about, constructing a new curriculum. So the Woodward Street, the Woodward School Enhancement has been a part of our conversation since we learned that we would have new neighbors, and that would be the public safety building. It was an opportunity to try to enhance the entrance and exiting from the Woodward School. Steve and I met this week with a designer from VHB, who is also working with the town on the public safety building. And I will have to say that it was nice to see our new neighbors breaking ground on May 18th, May 1st, and to be part of that groundbreaking ceremony. It was well-attended and quite a moment of celebration for the community of South Grove. And they acknowledged, and former selectman John Rooney mentioned how appreciative the town was that we would be willing to consider modifying the access points, not only to our campus, but from their new facility as well. So this is the last design, and we were also able to capitalize, timing is everything, with the timing of the Main Street improvements. If we remember last year, I think last fall Karen Galligan reported that the Main Street project might have included some sidewalk additions all the way down to the Woodward School property, and that's now reflected in the final diagram, schematic that we have here. So as we talk more about the summer, we have learned, and we learn each day, how very busy this area is going to be, and we are being as planful and mindful of all the activity that's going to take place to make sure that the kinds of things we need to do at Woodward Street School are being done and are able to be accomplished over the summer, because at this point, I would say our access to the building will be very limited. We have had a conversation with Karen Galligan, and in fact, tomorrow, myself, I've extended an invitation to Recreation, Karen Galligan, Steve and I will both be at the table, Brian Fantoni, who is our facilities director at this point in South Grove, to really join together and discuss what this might mean to the Recreation Department, what this might mean for the town. As they have shared with us, they will be laying sewer and water pipes in the vicinity of the Woodward School to access the facility, the public facility campus. Their first goal is to enter off of 85 here and then head up back, tear that building down, and then begin the leach field in the back, the new sewer and septic system, because it's a shared system. Woodward shares that with the facility, public facility, so they need to get moving on that in order for us to be ready. So the phasing of this project would be basically Phase 1. Steve, I can move the pointer and show what phase we're in if you want.
So the first part would be the connecting sidewalk into the Woodward driveway, and then, so that's on the right-hand side of where Superintendent Johnson has the laser pointer.
This is coming down from Main Street.
Yeah, and then the second, and this is all in relation to the Woodward project, not, you know, when we talk about phases, it's our phase, our side of it. So the next piece would be the additional parking and the building of a retaining wall in that area there. It would convert those parallel parking spaces, which are a safety concern, into pull-in or back-in spaces. We'd also be gaining additional 20 spots there. And then finally, milling and resurfacing the entire entry driveway and parking portion with the final piece adding the little cut-through to the safety building on the left there. So the way that was described to us the other day is that first piece is coming in, second piece is the new construction, and then, and then there might be a... second piece is the new construction, and then, and then there might be a pause with the milling and then a final top coat of all the blacktop. So how that timing is going to work depends a lot upon how that access or what kind of access the town may or may not need to get into the, the construction site for their safety building.
And the final phase will be this lower lot. So whether this is four and the cut through is five, or this is five, or this is four and this is five, I think just is going to depend on the progress that's made and some of these other things that are really not within our scope of control at this point. And so this is where the rec department comes in. We will be picking up a few spaces down here, I think, by the way we're changing this and the plan is to move that basketball court into a corner. The first, actually the second draft we saw didn't have it, that actually realized it was still in the center. But by moving that closer into a corner, whether it was this one or that one, allows for more space and really is a little bit more safety for the students. This retaining wall is quite a nice addition. So as the students might, you know, travel down that walkway, there's now an identified pathway here onto this walkway, which brings them onto the Woodward campus. And we remember one of the features that really is really enhancing the exiting of our students is that the buses will be entering off of 85. This is a one-way loop. So as they drop off, our students, when they arrive in the morning, the students will be safely dropped off right onto the Woodward, to the sidewalk here in front of the school. So there's no longer any crossing back and forth, which is fantastic. And then from that, then they just exit. So it's just a loop and we've gone to dark. And I know there have been a lot of conversations, wait here, all you can see is the red light, but if you can look on the left side, you can remember what was here. There is talk about, you know, what those traffic lights are going to be and what that emergency lights will be at the point of entry off of 85 and there's, that's still conversations with the town. And there it is. And then also, you know, additional signage. There is some right out there now, which you really don't notice because you have no reason to really pay too much attention to the flashing signs that are there now because there's no entry point. The other, I think, great feature is sort of just the safety walkway now in front of the cars, so they're not walking on the outside of the cars.
Currently, parents and teachers have to parallel park there and oftentimes buses are coming in and out and there's nowhere to walk. You're either crossing that driveway and walking in the grass and among trees or you're kind of walking right along the edge of the vehicles and that can be a pretty dangerous scenario. So really happy with the safety improvements that'll be made. I think in total, at the last count, we were picking up an additional 57 spots. I know if you're at the basket auction or basket raffle this past fall, you know, every piece of ground on Woodward property was utilized for vehicles. This at least puts people in a safer area when they park and they attend events at our school.
So it's, we're in conversation with the rec department as well in terms of what part of this process they're going to be involved in and there have been some conversations about the rec department taking another responsibility of, you know, restriping the basketball court and all of that. So one of our challenges, of course, is when you start a project, you certainly have a number that you have in mind and then as you continue the project, you watch the number increase. So Karen Gallegan, superintendent at DPW, has been incredibly collaborative throughout this process. And so when she went out and bid for all of the asphalt for the towns, we were included in that. So we're guaranteed to get the lowest price as well as the work on the retaining wall. So the most favorable price that we could possibly get was bundling our work with the town and that's really happening. In addition to this, I know this isn't actually Woodward, but we did have some conversations about that when we were talking about upgrades to our facilities. The bump, you, actually you have bumps because there are humps and bumps, that's an official term. So Trottyer has humps that could really send you airborne sometimes. So part of the work that we're doing also is repaving and the town is repaving the driveway that enters Neri and then off to Trottyer. And part of the bid process has also been to slow down the traffic at Neri and include some humps. So the bumps will become humps and we'll add some so that, that traffic in the Neri parking lot will really need to be a little bit more mindful of traveling around that, again, creating a safer environment for our students. So this is very exciting. The phasing will depend upon the final cost estimates that we receive and when do we start? It could be as soon as the second week of July. So tomorrow, again, we're trying to meet to figure out when Woodward would need to be cleaned. We do know that none of our school-related activities take place at Woodward this summer. If they did, we would have to be moving them out to another campus because this is going to be a very busy, busy part of town.
Is there camp here over the summer?
The rec, that's why we're meeting with Doreen. We want, based on our recent conversations with Karen, we want rec at the table so that we're working in collaboration with them. So based on whatever their needs are, it's still enough time for them to possibly relocate to another facility, but that's part of our conversation tomorrow.
I have a question about the diagram. So the buses would be the only ones using the new access road and all of their traffic comes in and out on the other one?
Correct. And that is only, there's a gate here and we are in charge of the gate. So after the buses are all in, the gate is locked after the buses, you know, when they need to have access again at the end of the day, the buses will, you know, will unlock the gate. And Steve, I think we picked up some spots here too, right?
Yeah, 13 spots. That's currently a turnaround for vehicles, for buses primarily. We still have our loading dock on the left-hand side of that diagram, so larger vehicles left to come in, you know, we'll be needing delivery trucks, but they shouldn't have any issue utilizing that space.
And is it, I'm sorry, it's still a two-way here for the parents? They'll be turning around in the circle, but they won't have to worry about bus traffic.
And is there a traffic light there or just down by the public safety?
That's not yet been determined. There is a flashing light here across on, on the side of the senior center there, but really it's not accessible. And in fact, when they, when we were doing the walkabout, they said, well, it's already assigned. Because it's on the main route of 85 and except that it's telling us to slow down, there's really no turn-in or turn-off points where the, where the sign is. So we've talked a lot about what that would look like when they actually create that new entry point. And the entry point is actually initially two lanes, but the, the left lane goes up and it will go up to.
It's two, two-way driveways. So one side of that would be for emergency vehicles only, entering and exiting. And the other side would be two-way and that's entry for primarily for their, their parking lot, but then that's the loop that our buses would access.
So a big piece of this is when do we asphalt? And Steve mentioned, you know, the milling and I think we'll know a little bit more tomorrow depending on what the thought is for access in the summer to get to build that back lot, just the, to work on the septic system. And, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to think about laying down new asphalt if it's going to be, you know, traveled over as soon as it's laid down. So a lot of people are involved and again, we thank the town for, you know, all of their support through the project and really being a partner with us. This was an opportunity that we seized, it came about just happenstance with the town's work and we've been able to really partner with them. So more to follow and hopefully when we meet again, if you just started the school year, we'll be traveling on a new roadway. Yeah, a lot of work.
That brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee.
Enrollments here in your packet, overall, you know, the backside of the enrollments is always as exciting as the front, which gives us projections. But, you know, over the course of the year, to have a difference from when we started with five students is just tremendous. It's a, it's a low number for all of the grades that we service, K through 3K to 8. And again, we mentioned our preschool numbers and our kindergarten numbers, we're being very mindful of what those look like. As we know, we see a lot of enrollments at that grade level, kindergarten level over the summer. So what you see now may be very different when we open our doors in August.
Is this, is this number on track with where we typically are or it's lower?
It's a little lower. So when we look at, you know, this year we had 131, but we'll also see some fluctuations there. So we use, Nezdek, we use census to do our projections. So if you look at what we're suggesting might be the enrollment in FY '20, you'll see that it's just the variability of, you know, birth year. So we're anticipating to be back up to 130. It's always a mystery, no matter what data we use, it's always a surprise.
So I have a question about, is our actual versus our projections, kindergarten on the, I realize that the projections, as you said, are going to morph into something else, but I don't remember what happened last year. So we've got three half-day and it looks like we've got 10 half-day projected. Is that?
Ninety-three.
Actually, in world. Do we believe that?
Registered for half-day. We have 10 officially.
Right.
But what we've seen, I think what we appreciate year after year is the 10 turn out as the year progresses, it may be even a month or two in, you know, once.
They morph into full-time.
They morph into full-time more often than not. They're having fun at Finn. Don't want to go home, so. Yeah, I think one year we had planned for just a half-day, we started with about 12 or 15 students and within three or four months we've been down to eight. So it does really change. It does not. Also in your report is the FY '18 general fund expenditure report. No significant variances at this time of year. We are ever mindful over our end-of-the-year balance. At this point, it remains in the black and that's good. And we're hoping that the projects move along so we'll be able to apply whatever funds might be available to us to offset some of these project costs as well, along with our revolving accounts. So tonight, we would need a vote to approve until audited.
I'll move that you accept the general fund expansion report as of April 2018 until audited.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Jean Anamos?
As we know, in the packet is the FY '19 approved budget. It's been a very successful evening for our K8s and also the students who would be moving on to the high school. And so that's in your packet. We'll be soon enough expending from that, just in about two months. And we'll be putting in '18 arrests and beginning to start expend from '19. But we also appreciate that the appropriation is a piece of our funding sphere of revenue available to us. And oftentimes, and again, we've spoken this evening about using revolving funds. We have four primary sources of revolving funds. One is facility rental, kindergarten tuition, preschool tuition, and the cafeteria. Our cafeteria is self-supporting. And throughout the budget season this year, we talked often about, you know, maybe it's time to revisit our positions in both our kindergarten, and we've been doing that for two years, but also moreover, our cafeteria and our facilities rental revenue. So I wanted to just give the committee a little bit of a review of the kinds of conversations we've had. And in your packet, you will note that there's an analysis of cafeteria projections. So it's not uncommon, it's not what we'd like to see, but it's not uncommon that whenever revenues fall short of projections in our revolving accounts, there is only one place to go because we can't run in the red, right? So that's offset with whatever savings we might have realized in the appropriated budget. Well, how do you realize savings? It may not have been as cold as we thought and we did not spend as much on heating or electricity or, you know, we made some tremendously efficient hires, replacing some of those folks that might have retired or moved on and so we realized some savings through that. Perhaps it was a student that we were fortunate enough to bring back into district and so you might have savings from that. So we try to be very wise about what those efficiencies result in, in terms of purchasing or offsetting some additional costs. You'll note that for the last or since '16, we've needed to use some of those savings through the appropriated budget to offset deficits in the cafeteria account. So I went back further than '16, but the snapshot was the same. You know, we've been tapping into our appropriated funds to offset shortfalls in revenue in cafeteria, for example, which is self-financing. Our participation rate, you can see on the top, for lunch, and we use full meals as a reference, is somewhere between 32 and 37% over the last three years. And I wanted to project out based on the, this snapshot and this analysis, what would happen if we remained at the current full meal price? So let's do a little historical perspective. The last time we raised the lunch price, pricing was in 2012, almost seven years ago. In years prior to 2012, there was a cost increase in 2009, in 2004, so we were the five-year interval and we had three-year interval and this is the longest we've gone since around 2004 in terms of a pricing increase. So we also did an analysis of where our full meal cost is in relationship to. Jen, do you have a, it should be in, not in your packet, but underneath the handouts, near the bin plan? So we did an analysis of where we fell in terms of other districts that's stable to the attachment and we find that the average full price for lunch is $3.96. So we're below the average. And we used some assumptions to project from '18 to '19. And those projections are fairly realistic. You'll see the assumptions on the bottom. State and federal reimbursement increased at about 3% per year. Historically, it might have been a little higher, but we know that the state and federal government does not always provide the same numbers, not just between years, but within the same year. They reduce, they increase and it's a little bit of a moving target, right? So I used a 3% escalator on state and federal reimbursement. Salaries have increased contractionally 2% a year. And that's, each of those years are reflected here and we're in our, going into our second year of the three-year contract. So we know that that's a fixed increase. So the revenue was calculated at the average yearly full meal, full meal count served, which is about 74,000. And we divided, I divided the cost into our projected revenue. So at $2.75, which is the current number, we serve about 408 full meals a day, validated that number with the state's average daily meal count for our district and we're pretty much on target with that number. Again, it can fluctuate, of course. And so based that on increased revenue, using that full meal cost with the projected increase in from $2.75 to $3. And a la carte sales, potato chips, I'm sure your, your children tell you what they bought if they didn't buy a full meal or brought in their own lunch from home. That's our a la carte offering and maybe an additional milk and so forth. That hasn't increased for some time. And so we use those percentages in terms of our projections. So this year, if all, if our projections for closing out 2018 hold true, we're looking at a deficit of about $3,794. Applying those increases, but also factoring increases in expenses as identified and holding the meals at $2.75, we would be looking at a deficit of about $18,000 next year. So if all of these, you know, variables come into play, even within range, clearly we're going to be looking at an increased deficit. And that, again, is balanced off the operational budget, which means if we wanted to spend those efficiency funds, I mean, the common efficiency funds. those efficiency funds, I mean, the column efficiency funds, um, for other resources, we, we can't, because we're offsetting cafeteria deficit. But if we look at raising the cost of the full meal, twenty-five cents, and the a la carte, five percent, which is projected in that FY two thousand and nineteen year, then we're to the good. Not a lot, but projections would have us, um, at least in the black, twenty-four hundred dollars. So what's the impact to an average family?
I just wanted to clarify something. I think, so the, the column that has no change at the top, and then two seventy-five, should that say FY two thousand and nineteen projected?
Yes, that would be if we froze, yes, thank you. That would be if we froze completely with, um, costs.
Okay, yeah.
Nope, no problem, thank you. And so, um, if the full meal-
I lost it.
Right here.
Yeah, no, I see that column with no change, but that's, um, that's a, that's a projected, the second?
Underneath there?
What'd you ask?
If it should say FY two thousand and nineteen. It's supposed to say FY two thousand and eighteen projected.
As opposed to-
That would be the projected with no change.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, as opposed to proposed.
Right. And, thank you. And so, what that would mean to a family, um, or per student, a twenty-five cent increase per full meal, that's assuming the child eats a full meal each day we're in session, one hundred and eighty days. It would be a forty-five dollar a year increase per student. I'm not sure how many students we have buying a full meal every day. The numbers don't, don't hold that out. I mean, we could do the, you know, the micro-analysis, but this is a general projection. And so, given that we haven't had any increases in any line items at all for seven years, just about seven years, it's certainly a timely conversation. And, um, given that we are below the average meal cost in our neighboring communities, this might be a fiscally responsible thing to take a look at, uh, with, certainly any increase is an increase, and it has an impact, but we're looking at a maximum of forty-five dollars per student in that scenario.
And would the a la carte items stay the same?
The a la carte would increase by five percent.
Five percent.
So if we looked at those line items in that FY nineteen projected, actual, um, to the FY nineteen, three dollar, um, projected, so the two seventy-five column, and that reflects a five percent increase in the a la carte. It's not, I'm not looking necessarily for a vote this evening to increase. I would ask that the school committee consider this, um, tonight, um, take action if we wish, but, um, it would be, um, prudent to be able to announce any change to our families as of July one before the school year starts.
So we either vote it tonight or next month?
Or consider it next month.
I'm ready with some questions. So, if we break down the expenditures to basically salaries, food, and miscellaneous expenses, so basically, and it looks like that, you know, salaries might be two, three percent, and I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking from two thousand and eighteen to the two thousand and nineteen projected, just on expenses. Just salaries, just whatever it is, three, two pounds, is it two? But the other two are more like ten percent, and food being even larger than that, and miscellaneous. So what is miscellaneous again?
So, you are correct. Um, the assumption on the bottom is that all of the expenses are calculated in ten percent increase, which is pretty much what we've been seeing from year to year, um, when we track them. So miscellaneous expense, all those other things, um, you know, paper goods, um, that are, that are fairly costly, any, um, replacement of equipment, any-
Cleaning.
Cleaning supplies, anything that is not necessarily food-related, but are necessary in the delivery of the product to, to our students.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I think this is great that we're having a conversation here tonight, because if there are additional information or specifics that we can bring back next month, that would help the committee make a decision, we can certainly do that.
So, um, what we're looking at is Southborough, K through eight here, correct?
Yes.
So, comparing this with Northborough or the high school, and I'll get back to the high school in a second, maybe, how are we?
So, um, I would say that Southborough is in a more favorable position than, um, Northborough in terms of deficit.
What about, what about the meal cost?
Northborough voted to increase their meal cost last month, this month, actually.
And they're currently at the same cost we are?
Same.
So, kind of throughout the region, we're at the same cost?
We are, throughout the region, at the same cost. There's some variability in the way the high school presents its meal plan, because the high school students eat more, and they tend to, um, purchase more from the a la carte menu, so there, there's a little variability with their pricing, but if we compare K eight to K eight in Northborough, was exactly the same, um, two dollars and seventy-five cents. And they are in a deficit situation as well.
So I, I notice, um, that in some districts, they actually differentiate between grade levels. There's a couple of these, for example, uh, Marlborough, it's interesting, so Marlborough, the elementary is what we are, but the middle and the high school, they're already three dollars, so I guess there's issues of, um, if we had a differentiation between elementary and middle, then we'd have to be dealing with it, just in this, I guess, sort of district. And I notice, well, there's a couple more. Maynard, uh, has a three-tiered spread, uh, elementary, two seventy-five, middle, three, high, three fifty, maybe to reflect kids just eat more, so we're trying to associate the cost. So, have we, um, what are you thinking about so far, okay, as far as, any applicability to that tiered kind of thought, or is there concerns about doing something like that?
I think historically, our K eights, which is, history doesn't necessarily mean this is where we need to go forward, but, you know, we do share the same, um, contract K eight. In these cases, the contract may vary, you know, there could be variability in the pricing structure that has nothing to do with the meal, but rather all of those external expenses that are applied to that. So, for example, our contract with the high school is different. Our cafeteria, um, is not, does not operate under contract with the high school. And, um, some of these other school systems may in fact have that variability built into their expense model. We have consistently been, in this district, our K eight, we're always the same across Northborough, we always remain the same pricing structure at the K eight line.
I mean, clearly, if I went over to Finn, you know, I wouldn't see a child eat as much as if I moved to Trotty, okay, and that's, but the, but the way we've set the contract up is it's a per meal, so we would have to actually do something about that contract if we wanted to try to, uh, yes, reallocate somewhat of those contracts on a year-to-year basis, or?
No, they're, they're three-year contracts, like the teachers association.
So where are we in that?
We're in year two of year three. But I think, you know, in terms of how the cafeteria model is in our system-
Just thinking here, okay.
But don't you have to consider too, that there are different options in different grades, like the middle school has, I think, more a la carte options than-
Could be more cost.
Like a salad bar, I think, don't they?
I mean, to some extent, I think what the high school students buy and what they eat may be somewhat different than what the middle school and the, and the elementary students eat, but historically, I think, when the meal planning takes place in Southborough, it's pretty much a, um, I guess a collaborative effort in terms of their meal planning, and the offerings are pretty much the same. And now, they're more even driven by quantity and, and, you know, food groups from the federal government. I think the one variability that we have appreciated is how the free and reduced lunch counts have been calculated over time. Attached to that, there's some additional information as well. And so, um, we've seen some significant changes in our reimbursement, and so you asked about the other districts. Our reimbursement rate here in Southborough is not significant. So I would say of the three districts, Southborough might realize, um, the least amount of reimbursement from federal and state, and that has some impact on the overall pricing as well.
I understand. It just still, I guess if I'm leaving you with anything, it just seems like that, understanding all of the issues on what, what, you know, what the students order, and, you know, and the older students probably wore a la carte, that a full meal, the definition of a full meal for a kindergartner, um, I have a hard time believing that's, that's the same full meal for an eighth grader. Am I wrong?
It's pretty much the same.
Very close.
Yeah, it's very much the same. It's prescribed by the government, and I've eaten at the middle school, and I've eaten at the elementary school, and what I ate is basically the same thing.
All because of the federal subsidy.
All because of the federal subsidy?
Yep, and the rules applying to that.
So I know that my daughter-
Just because I'm trying to increase your cost and save-
I know. Believe me, if you do it, make a bigger meal, I think you make a lot of my eighth-grade boys pretty happy.
I mean, how many kids buy-
They might buy more of the meal.
Well, they buy double lunches.
They can do that.
They do that, I mean, do you think a lot of kids do that in middle schools?
No, not a lot, a handful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I mean, one of, one of my questions would be kind of around what Roger's saying, it's like, I look at these costs of the other schools, and I wonder, well, do they offer similar style lunches? Do they offer more, you know, our lunches tend to be very stereotypical, chicken nuggets, pizza, hot dogs, you know, that kind of thing. These schools with higher costs, do they offer different kinds of foods that-
I think that the issue is really what their expense, what's their basis for expenses than the, the meal. So I actually have what is considered by the Massachusetts Department, um, Elementary and Secondary Education, what is expected regardless of the grade level, to be served as a meal, to be reimbursed. And so that is something you'll always hear when you talk to food service directors about, it has to be a reimbursable meal, and so what does that look like? And so the guidelines are the same. So I think that, you know, how many lunches might the students be buying in the high school versus elementary is a valid point, but to look, I guess, at, at a school that has lower cost or higher cost by somewhere between five and twenty cents, there's so many variations that can go into, and variables that can go into their pricing structure. So without saying, okay, why are you, why are you pricing your elementary meals lower than the middle school at the elementary level, or middle to high? You know, we can engage in that conversation, but I think we'd find that their, their basic cost because of employment or contracts might vary. Because the meal is basically the same, you know, in terms of what they have to serve. And I'd be happy to, you know, make copies of this just for information for all of you, and send it out in, in an email.
I would appreciate that.
I have a question about, um, the, the schools that are on this list of the survey, how were they selected? I'm just wondering, is this just schools that publish their prices that we know, or?
The schools that are in our collaborative.
Yeah.
Oh, in the class, okay, gotcha. That's very, is very important. It was very important to try to also include, um, like another regional, like we can study, and so can Concord, Carlisle, and Berlin, Boylston. Uh, not only are they in our collaborative, but they're-
Regional.
Yeah, and so we wanted to see what that looked like at another regional school.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Are all the schools in the collaborative on San Concorde?
No. They're all individual district employees. But we do do a lot of collaborative purchasing, which helps tremendously, whether through the collaborative or through other sources of connections. So, um, I'd be happy to, uh, provide this, if you'd like, as I go out to you in the air, just for you to take a look at what the government is saying a meal is, and then, um, if there's some additional questions, um, you know, through the chair or, or Paul Williams and Dr. Lee, I can give the information. And send it out. But clearly, you know, I think, given that there's been seven years since we've adjusted the lunch prices, and regardless of at what tier we, we price these, if we reduce, you know, elementary, um, and raise middle school, we're still looking at a distribution of, you know, the total enrollment, and, um, middle school is only a portion, six hundred, about, a little less than half of the total enrollment. And so, when we look at enrollment by grade, we have to factor that into the overall impact of what we're going to be, looking at a deficit or a little bit of a reserve. So if these projections come true at the three-dollar price, I mean, we're not that significantly above what we're projecting to be a deficit.
Well, that's what concerns me, I mean, we haven't added prices in seven years, and we're gonna lose eighteen thousand dollars if we come to it, and it's kind of walking right today.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment. It seems, uh, seems reasonable to want to not run the lunch program at a, at a deficit of that magnitude, so.
I mean, I think if we, if this came up every year, and we were taking a look at this every year, and it hasn't, and, um, seven years is the longest amount of time we've gone, um, in a, you know, in a twelve-year, or ten-year spread, and longer, that we've really taken a look at this and, and done some, um, objective analysis in terms of where we are.
I agree absolutely that, based on what our pricing is currently, um, what the projected deficit is, if there's, uh, I think there's no question that we should increase it. So I don't want to take us too far afield. To explore tiered pricing anymore, if we have any interest in doing that, would that really, are we saying that, that would actually have to be, um, consistent with, consistent with, um, the food contract, if you will, to, to-
To some extent, and the two percent-
It'd be harder to, to work around that. I mean, I just, I just, a quick count, and I probably counted wrong, out of the twenty-nine schools on here, uh, twelve are tiered, seventeen are single, so this is not, you know, this is not a novel idea, right?
Right.
A lot of people must be doing it, had some success doing it, okay, but, I mean, our goal is to, we've got to cover the deficit and, you know, and try to get, and try to get into the real world as far as our actual pricing.
Right, I mean, one, one thought might be, go, you know, do the twenty-five percent change for next year for everybody, and then look at it too.
Twenty-five cents.
You know, after that, going forward, trying to cover.
I think the other concern is we're only looking at four meals a day, and so the other, um, focus that I would also like to put in place is, what, what can we do to increase revenue, not because of the twenty-five percent increase?
Twenty-five cent increase.
Twenty, twenty-five cents.
You follow, to his lead.
I watched Jennifer's eyes with Tori Piper's. But, you know, what else can we do to increase revenue? And that's a conversation that we have to have as a food service program, because in total, four hundred and eight meals a day, when we have X amount of students, our enrollment is, is not significant. So while we're increasing to twenty-five cents for our full meal, uh, we also need to be looking at the product, and, and how can we deliver the product that, that really is appealing to our students? And I think to me, that's as much a concern as trying to have that count in the block. It's a combination of, of conversations. It's not just, this isn't a fancy, this is not gonna solve all the problems, because a thirty-two percent, um, participation rate is not a high participation rate. So we need to start asking some other questions as well. And hopefully then, as we look at other increased costs down the road, the increased sales will, will offset that, and there isn't a need to increase price, so.
Look, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, uh, um, I'm not sure exactly how to state this, and we can always go this down if we want to bring it back, but, uh, so I move that we, what did I say, that increase the school lunch-
The full meal?
The full meal price by twenty-five cents from-
And the a la carte to five percent?
And the a la carte by five percent.
For the fiscal year, FY nineteen?
For the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, thank you.
Second? I'll second.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were second again.
I think we have some more questions?
I do, I, so, just one thing I want to bring up is, in the parent community, there's been a lot of talk about the school lunches. And I know for, my kids don't buy because they're hungry after they eat, like it's not enough food for them. So I think there might be some pushback from the parent community when we do this. I see the need for it and I think we should do it, but I think there's going to be some pushback of people saying, my kid's already hungry and you're going to raise the price and not give my kid more food. So I think we're going to hear that, so I think we should be prepared for that.
So do we have a, I mean, do you have a thought on, and that's good information, but do you have a thought on how that would change at least the current thinking that from a fiscal standpoint, we simply need to raise the price? We may need to do some other things, but if there's other information that might come to us before the next meeting, which we really need to do at least, or later the next meeting, we should we can vote it down?
Say that again, Jess.
Well, well, I mean, so understanding that there's going to be some pushback, that's good information, is that something that would cause you to not want to raise the price at this point in time when we look at the, kind of the economics, you know, that we're facing?
I think it's clear we have to, you know, because we don't want to be in a deficit, but I think we should just carefully plan how that's going to be communicated to the parents. You know, make it very clear why and what the strategy is for future, exactly what you were just saying here, you know, we need to look at the reason why people aren't buying lunch so much and, you know, should we be switching up the food because that's something that parents talk about a lot. So I think it's just, I just want to make sure it's communicated in a way that it's very clear why this is happening and-
I'd agree, and, you know, we haven't raised prices in seven years. I don't know that we've taken a hard look at what we're doing in the cafeteria as a school committee, I'm sure the food service director has, but, you know, maybe it's time to update on what's going on with the food.
I think that's a separate, I mean, related but separate issue. I mean, we've been talking about the healthiness of lunches and, you know, I've been having big dialogue in WeChat to talk about, that's still a big concern. And so I know, and a lot of parents I know would have a reaction to the increase in price and saying, you're not necessarily addressing some of the nutritional, I mean, that's the wrong phrase, but some of the, the way that the meals are put together, you know, and, you know, I've been talking to the Chestnut Hill Farms woman who, parent who actually has worked with the Salem schools and gets some grant funding, so I don't know if there's a possibility, and this is again, probably a different discussion, but a possibility of bringing in grant funding to have healthier or kind of greater, like fresh produce coming in. But I think, I mean, I think we need to because we shouldn't, we need to raise it, but we also need to address these other issues that parents are concerned about too. Yeah, I'll just say that, I think that a, I think a 25 cent increase is not so overwhelming that it's really going to be this, you know, disaster for, you know, I mean, it is an increase, but there's also a very real deficit here. So I think too, or projected deficit. So to address that, I think a mere 25 cent increase sounds, seems reasonable to me. But I do think, when I first saw this, I was thinking, if we started going much higher, I think people will expect more in return.
I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure that there's any reason they shouldn't expect more anyway, all right? We just, you know, don't necessarily have that mapped yet.
Right.
But I think the first defense, and maybe there's a number of things that need to be defended, is, we've done this for seven years, so I don't know that many, I don't know that many things that are sitting at the same price for seven, for seven years. So I think most people would accept that as at least a reasonable component of the reason that we need to do this. And we now, and we see it in kind of the fiscal deficit, that's because the costs have risen. It's just the price of what we're delivering hasn't, but I think there probably, it sounds like there are various, people deserve to maybe have us look further at some other aspects of this. I think it's very-
Yeah, I mean, to me, a reasonable question is if we raise it more, what traditional options can we deliver?
Right. And that was the discussion at the meeting that we had, is that parents would be probably pretty, I don't know, some parents were, maybe just the vocal parents would be willing to increase if they saw things like collaboration with some local farms or fresh produce, apples without sugar, you know, those kinds of things.
Or at least they have options, so people have choices. If they choose to pay more for product X, then they can choose to do that. I know that we are constrained to some extent by the federal regulations. And so what is important, I think, to your point, Jess, is actually the communication piece. What is it that we are required to do? What is it that the regulations and the guidelines state? And then how can we, in our food service program beyond that and offer choices and continue to look at, at other ways to explore, you know, delivering a great product that people want to purchase? So that's something that we can, we are having those conversations, that is why, you know, we're having these conversations this evening about how can we increase those meal counts as well, so that there's a balance where we're getting additional revenue because we're having more people buy prior, right? And more kids are enjoying the experience and lunch is one of the best parts of the day. And so it's nice for them to enjoy the time and their lunch at the same time. So more great conversations to take place. And I think if we can, we can support the notion of an increase because it's been so long and costs keep continuing to rise, but partner that with, and we want to continue the conversation about providing a great quality product that our children want. I think that's a good step in the direction.
So if there's any questions, we're going to be growing stuff at Finn and other places?
Yeah.
I'll be charging.
I am curious, and, you know, I'm not trying to get back to this tier again, but in discussions that you have had with parents, have you had, that question at all come up from the parents of younger students? Why is, why is my child paying the same prices, you know, or not? Maybe that's not even something that's universal awareness.
It's more that my kid's older, I don't understand why they're getting the same portion that they got when they were in kindergarten and they're hungry. That's more what I, what I hear.
By reducing the kindergarten portions, it'll solve that problem.
Yeah, I mean- Yeah, so there are discussions going on about changing up the food, because I think parents would be really excited to hear that and like putting that in with the communication that we're raising prices will kind of soften the blow. Even though it is only 25 cents, I think people, just the idea of, you know, you're raising it and you're not giving me more, I think will-
And I think when you do an analysis like this, the fact that the analysis presents what we're looking at drives the conversations about the participation rate. The participation rate is about the meal. So those are conversations that will happen.
And that's, those are the kind of conversations I've heard parents say, I don't want my child to eat the school lunch because I don't think it's that healthy. And so I know a lot of people will send their own lunches.
And a big piece of this is just starting at some baseline of understanding and information about what is it that we have to provide? What do the regulations look like and then where do we go from there? And at what cost does that going there mean to the consumer and to our parents?
So in thinking about the future, is, have we done it, everyone a disservice by holding this, holding the line on this for seven years? I mean, yeah, probably we can't defend 25 cent increase saying, well, our costs increased that much in one year. But, and I guess there's nice round numbers, $2.75, $3. But, and that's not for this vote, okay, but maybe for future discussion, you know, raise it 5 cents. Raise it 5 cents the next year. Because our costs are going, I mean, that's not, that's not for this vote, but I'm just throwing it out as something to think about in the future.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Or is it hard to administer that?
No, I think one of the things is just what is the focus? And so we're taking a look, and we started to have this conversation last year about looking at some of these things that are part of our process every year and looking at them every year. You know, there shouldn't be sort of that long period of time in between analysis of doing our work, which is doing our business really, you know, we're in education, but as subsets of all these kinds of conversations about rentals and cafeteria, because all of that means maximizing our resources so we can provide the maximum for our students, whether it's in the cafeteria or in the classroom. So, you know, we're getting on more of a cycle. We started having these conversations last year and being very mindful of analyzing this on a yearly basis, not just closing down budget, but looking at all those subsets that are part of the resources that we have, the financial resources. So that's an excellent idea and that's what we should be bringing forward each year.
I think, I think we were talking about a 5 cent increase, you know, which could mostly be justified by just the cost, I wouldn't want to dissuade people from wanting more as far as nutrition and things like that, that there, there could be less conversation about the, about the increase, you know, what are we getting?
All right, well, we have a motion to vote on, you know, obviously this is going to be an ongoing discussion, but I think at this point, we're ready to vote. All on table. Who else?
I want to thank the committee, I know that was a most kind of fun conversation and I think it gives us a good idea what we'll be on future agendas or in study groups and whatnot. And with that in mind, I will also, this was much briefer because there's absolutely, it's only information, no numbers. We were looking at facilities rental as well. And South Row's in a really interesting position. I would say, you know, when we look for comparison, I only have to look, you know, behind the other bar, right? Because we're analyzing the same information. And what South Row realizes is basically a 90% guaranteed revenue stream in their facilities rental, because 97% of our facilities rental comes from fixed anticipated revenues. And those sources of revenue are predictable because we have relationships with them. Asvet Valley Collaborative, thanks to Keys Hospitality and phenomenal work with making sure that we provide an outstanding environment for students who are part of the RISE program, the REACH program at Trotter, we have RISE at the high school and we REACH at Trotter. So we have REACH at Trotter where we share space with the Asvet Valley Collaborative. And that's one of those wonderful in district programs that not only allows us to keep our students right next door, the Keys Office basically down the hall by providing wonderful care, but also we receive cost benefit because we basically rent out that space to the collaborative. In addition to that, we have extended day. Isn't that amazing that, you know, our children can stay within our schools for a length of time during the day, safe and having an outstanding program? And we have a relationship with them as well, so that brings in a guaranteed revenue. And all of this means it's predictable, so that when we look at Woodward School Enhancement and we talk about, you know, our phone system, we know that we've got a revenue stream that supports our operational budget because we're accessible and folks want to be, you know, part of our school environment. We also have guaranteed revenue because you have us, you have Central Office in one of our schools. And those cost share with North Row and Regional, so we charge back the cost of our space to our two districts. And South Row enjoys that sort of guarantee, which means, there's an upside to all of this. Whatever we do with our rental rate structure allows for maximum growth because 97% is guaranteed. So whatever we do to entice other folks to participate in accessing our facilities, it's all on plus that. So we, as a leadership team, need to really talk about what that would look like and what parts of our school are we even interested in having folks come in? Because revenue realize is not always revenue welcomed, right? Depending on what they're accessing and what cost is, we have the cost of renting out our space to folks. So we've begun to analyze that and it was really interesting also to take a look at what portion of this rental income or revenues received we use for one-time significant capital enhancements versus how much of that we're using for routine maintenance. So if we're using this just, you know, to do painting, that needs to probably move more into the budgeting process for the operational budget. So this process helps inform our conversations when we begin the budget development for FY '20 in September. I know, I can't believe I just said FY '20. You know, what percent are we using for these one-time really significant capital enhancements like the driveway and the phone system versus what we're using for routine maintenance? And so that should be followed into our budget as part of our operational, which allows us then to do more, bigger projects. You know, the administration always has innovative ideas and always excited to hear those kinds of things that we need to do to enhance our classroom experience for our students. So that was, that was very interesting. And also very helpful to realize that as we plan these capital projects, we have the reliance of these revenues to build, to build the work on. So more to follow, more analysis, but it's really the first time, you know, I can remember that we've had some conversations about how that is disaggregated. So we'll do more of that and again, that's to Roger's point, something that, you know, we want to talk about every year as well. Preschool, I will add, we really took a deep look at preschool, I can share this with the school committee and subcommittee, and we are adjusting our rate structure in preschool as well. For those students, we do necessarily have to provide, we do have to provide that experience for students who might become recovered under student support services, but for other parents, it's an option if they want to enroll their students in preschool and that's not a requirement of the department. We're happy when that happens because we have a nice, a nice heterogeneous grouping, if you will, of students in that, in the preschool. And Clayton has done, in his short time as principal, just a phenomenal job, expanding opportunities, you know, we did this mid-year this year. We were able to open up an additional classroom with no additional cost to us for the most part, and that then invited in more students who were tuitioned in, so that tuition helps to offset the cost. So lots of good conversations taking place.
Can I ask a question about, has there been discussion, you know, extended day, that's quite a waiting list, a long waiting list usually, but no space for the additional children? Has there been discussions about, or is there more space or way to increase rental cost from additional extended day students?
So some of their, some of the rationale for not necessarily increasing the number of participants is tied to space, but there are also, it can also be tied to their license in terms of how many students they're able to take in? So just as a matter of information, we will be in, very shortly, having conversations with extended day. Again, it's a three-year cycle. And so every year, we do talk about those things. What do they need to really operate a program? And to some extent, the waitlist is simply because they don't have the capacity to expand beyond this facility. Coincidentally, we have exactly the same situation in the other barrow, huge waitlist, but their license doesn't allow them to expand beyond what they have now, so it's a head count as well. But you can be assured that when we meet with them for the next contract, those are always part of the conversation. But we also enjoy the fact that they use our facility in a different rate structure for summer programming as well.
So it's the educational policy, I don't remember this time, I guess. Policy development and distribution, we have a whole bunch. These are second reads, theoretically up for a vote.
Second read, up for potential repeat.
It's, I just, we need to, the religious observance policy was a combined policy initiative, brought to each of the separate committees for input and suggestions for edits. And it will be voted on once the combined meeting, where every, that's one of those new policies that we developed. So, and it's new policy language, we try to have some consistency across the districts. And so this policy was brought to combine and it was- And so this policy was brought to combined and it was decided that it would go back to each committee for input only and it would be voted on at the combined meeting next month. We haven't received significant edits because we went through like five or six different versions of editing along the way. All the other policies, at last month's meeting, Paul asked about health and wellness. So, we reached back to Health and Wellness Committee. Lori Cardy provided me with her review sheet of when they review health and wellness policies, which we now are going to incorporate into our policy conversations. So, when we get their lists, it will be so noted on the policy when health and wellness reviewed. So, all these J-120, J-220, J-340 that are health and wellness oriented, like the immunization, dispensing of medications and the head injury and concussion policy were reviewed by Health and Wellness on the cycle that they're on, September 26th, so, of '17. So, they were reviewed and generally that includes Sharon Campion, who's our district nurse, district being all three districts. And she sits down with Health and Wellness folks, which is basically the healthcare folks, the nurses and so forth. And they review the policy from the language and changes from a medical practitioner's view. And then they send these back to our subcommittee, the policy subcommittee. And then we bring them to school. So, Paula asked about that.
Well, that was only with respect to that head injury concussion specifically says it needs to be reviewed every two, at least every two.
So, we get carried away at this thought and ask about all of them. And Mary Beth and Katara, I think I asked about identification of the district. So, I did reach back to legal counsel and his opinion basically was it's an AKA, you know, for the most part. So, for the most part, our district is referred to even by the Department of Ed. If you were to look us up at the Department of Ed, sometimes we're Northborough-Southborough, sometimes we're, you know, Northborough-Southborough Regional. And so we've sort of been referenced in many ways. And the notion that it says the public schools of Northborough, you can put indoor, the public schools of Southborough when it's, when it carries that connotation. He, again, did not feel that it was material, but in the end, it's up to the school committee if they wish to be just the Southborough Public Schools. So, I bring that back to you. Thank you.
I think that was primarily Mary Beth's concern. My concern was more where it said the Southborough School Committee as the employer.
Right.
Which seems different.
It's not saying the district, the schools, yeah. And we can make those changes pretty simply as your policies.
Paul, the other conversation that we had is with two new committee members, it might be good to give some time for second read and we can bring it back for a third read and vote at the next school committee.
But they've had all day to read it.
Nothing else going on.
Here's the packet.
That's a good, that's a good question.
So, just bring it back.
We did read them. So, I, though, I only had questions about one of them, to be honest, so.
True.
And it was just the, the one about the school immunization requirements? So, yeah. So, is, are we basically saying now everybody has to be immunized?
So, there is the third paragraph in the policy.
Yeah.
There are some exceptions with McKinney-Bento and homeless. So, that third paragraph that states have, the last sentence, have not had the required immunizations or are not otherwise exempted. So, there's some exemptions that are allowed in. That is the sentence that takes that.
And we're not saying specifically anymore what those exemptions.
Correct. Okay. But they're very limited.
Anything else?
It's a good tag team on the policies.
If you guys are comfortable voting on these tonight, then we can get them out of the way.
How do we need this?
Maybe one motion for all of them?
That'd be great.
Unless, yeah, unless somebody's got something specific on one of them. Okay, I guess even if we had one motion for all of them, we could bring it up. Well, I will move that we accept the following policies. School-based public access rehabilitation program, E-210. Recruiting and hiring personnel, G-110. Class size, I-240. We didn't have any comments on the religious.
You can skip that one.
Yeah, let's, let's, entrance age for kindergarten and first grade, J-110. School elimination, immunization, yeah, hold on. School immunization requirements, J-120. Dispensing of medications, J-220. And head injury and concussions policy, J-340.
One second.
We need further discussion. All in favor? Passage in analysis. Thank you. All right. Personnel items. Have a brief personnel report?
It's brief. Paul, he's been with us a number of years.
Oh, right. He's been with us for nine years, going on a 10. He's done a wonderful job as part of our student support services department in varying capacity between NIRI and Trotter. He's been at Trotter now for many years. Tremendous advocate for the kids, does a great job, will do the extra things that really build the connection to the students. And he's certainly going to be, going to be missed and, you know, we wish him certainly the best in his retirement, which I know he would be busy with. So, I think it's bittersweet for him in many ways, but I wish him nothing but the best.
Good guy. Great guy. Are there any? Action on minutes. We have no shortage of minutes to approve here either. I think there was one where I had a few comments and I should have a hard copy with the red line changes.
Right. It's not the one in your packet, I don't think. It was needed out tonight along with the interior committee and cafeteria information. You'll note it has some red line connection. I think it mostly.
It was mostly.
Secretary Page's needs.
Right. And for the new members, this may seem odd, but you are allowed to approve minutes at meetings that you did not attend.
Well, I actually have a comment. So, I think for the January, what is it? Tuesday, January 9th at 7:30 a.m. I don't believe I was present for that.
Always in spirit.
I know. Always thinking about it. But I, I don't think I was actually there or present. And I think, yeah, so.
Can you type that change?
Yeah. And then also I had a, let me see if I can find it.
So, may I comment on the Tuesday, January?
Yeah.
Is that the one where I don't think I was there either, but I'm not listed as present? I'm just not listed as absent.
But are you on the, the subcommittee?
Oh, then you're there. Good point.
Okay.
I wonder if I looked in my calendar for that and didn't see it anywhere.
On April, the one for April 11th, just on page four, in the paragraph about the policies, the second to last, let's see, how do I describe this? Should I get this to you in red line and we do this one next time? There's just, there's a weird reference about legal counsel and policy I-240. I think that doesn't belong there.
We're on page four.
Page four.
Right.
And there's toward, sort of toward the bottom, there's a paragraph that starts Assistant Superintendent Martineau. Okay. The second to last sentence ends with the words and policy I-240.
I think it should just be in legal counsel.
Yeah. Okay. That's all.
And red line and policy I-240.
Very good. I think we can just do this all as one, as amended.
As amended. I can make a motion that we accept the special open meeting minutes of April 4th, 2018, the special open meeting minutes of April 9th, 2018 as, oh, wait, which one do I do? Oh, there. The minutes of the open meeting of April 11th, 2018 as amended. Capital planning, subcommittee meeting minutes of October 4th, 2017. Operational budget, subcommittee meeting minutes of January 9th, 2018 as amended. And the policy development, subcommittee meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2018.
Same thing. Any more discussion? All in favor?
We have to say, I think this brings us current. We started last year trying to approve everything, even if the subcommittees weren't in the meeting. Instead of bringing them forward into the next year, I think this is the second year we've hit the mic so far. This is great.
And approval bills and payrolls need to take care of after meeting. Add items for next month. Yeah, last meeting. So, the summer break.
Subcommittee assignments?
I guess, subcommittee assignments.
Kindergarten update?
Kindergarten update.
Public school facility update? No, Woodward and the public facility.
Will it be an update on the lunch discussion we just had? Or is that?
I can certainly provide an update in terms of whatever conversation we have with the food director, service director, between now and then. I believe there was some consensus that that packet I had, you might be interested in receiving it. Yeah, so we could bring that back in case there's some questions.
Okay.
And have it as an agenda item.
Okay.
I don't know if I'll have an update on, we probably won't have an update on the revenues because when we meet next, we still are in session to involve me, so. But certainly we'll have that in September when we get close to the final meeting.
All right. Have any other ideas in the meantime? Just let me know if we can. And that brings us to audience sharing for the second time. Yeah, so.
I've had a couple of notes I've made through the meeting. One is your long discussion about increasing cafeteria prices. My point, I don't have a financial calculator, so I can't do the real math, but 9% in seven years is like, it's, simple division is 1.3%, which is way under inflation and you ought to be able to note that. I attended the public safety building committee meeting on Monday and I thought you might be interested to hear that the general contractor, a company called CTA, seems to be very aggressive about schedule. And in particular, they were proposing to accelerate their phase one plan, which is up to connecting the septic system from an original target date of mid-August to like the beginning of July, which ought to be good for the, for the schools if they're able to pull it off. There was supposed to be a working meeting yesterday of, at the job level. I don't know what happened there. But if it, if it holds up, that would be good news for you folks. And then the other note I made as you all were talking, I don't have any opinion on the merits of school choice, but pretty clearly there's a structural problem if our costs are three times what the reimbursement rate is. And it seems to me that feedback on that, reason for not even being able to consider the merits, ought to find its way back to the legislature or whoever was proposing that. Because, you know, maybe it's a good thing. It certainly isn't a good thing if a district like ours can't even consider it purely on finances. And for what it's worth, I believe that our state reps are at the board of select meetings meeting next Tuesday talking about, of all things, the state budget. So, that might be an opportunity to buttonhole them if you're so inclined.
Thanks, Ken. We just met with our state, with Carolyn Dagmar and as well as Alice Page, we think we just corrected in those minutes, just a few weeks ago, and discussed things along that, those lines. I think we had a discussion of that at last month's meeting. Any other audience sharing? All right. Break that. How about a motion to adjourn? I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We adjourn.